This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
A fourth grade class, when we pivoted, those students missed turning 10 in the school, becoming the oldest in the school, and it just was a regressive experience for them all. And everyone felt that way. I feel lucky that I was a fully formed adult at that time. So I just think that the things that we have in place in these Hampton schools are really important and wonderful, and we've worked really hard to build them up. And I understand that there are funding sources that have shifted. The COVID money from the federal government has changed, but what hasn't changed is the fact that the children went through this experience and need a lot of help at the schools. And so I'm asking that we level fund so that we can continue to move forward.
Thank you. Do we have any folks at home? I see one.
Sorry, level service.
Yes, level services. I noted that. I just sort of heard level services. I see Sean. Sean, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yes, can everybody hear me? Can people hear me?
It looks like you know. Hang on, we can't hear you. I am the host. Oh, it's a carrier thing.
How do I?
Say again, Sean.
Can you hear me? Yes.
All right, Sean, try saying something again.
Hello?
It looks like there's like a sign that says no.
Oh, there's like a no, I'm not even allowed out.
The block, so which is not even allowed.
What is that picture? Sure. As an excellent. Does someone want to go run and get, just touch it? Visitors. So we are, as I've said, we are basement, comments room B. She doesn't know how to use this unit. It's brand new. This is the first one that's being used. Do you know Corinne?
Thank you. Agreed.
Yeah, but this is brand new. Brand new. This is the first meeting ever using this technology.
But they can hear us and they can hear him.
Sean, give us a thumbs up if you can hear us.
Yes.
Yes, and they can hear him, but we can't hear them.
Yeah.
We got audio in one direction.
Thank you for your patience. Please pause while we, anyone have elevator music they can turn on?
Yeah, it's definitely the TV. At least we know what it is. Yeah, the lights, that's just all on.
I mean, pictures are so clear. The phone up there, I think this function's not available.
So I couldn't ask you for output thing.
Okay, so you just on the TV. No, on your computer. Wait, oh, here.
You just go to. I don't know. This is very. I could have done that. So they can't hear you, but you can hear them?
They can hear us.
They can hear us. We can't hear them. Like no sound is coming out of it.
All right, so then you need the speaker.
Sean, will you say something?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Right now.
Is the volume up?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't turn something.
Do you want to try someone else?
No.
Can someone else on this unmute themselves to make sure it's not just me?
I can.
It's not just you. I can hear you, Sean.
Okay.
Okay, we got it. We got it.
You got it? Okay. I was also wondering if it was my computer here because I do have security software.
You can choose the speaker up there, but if you guys can hear it, then everyone here, okay, everyone. Okay, sorry about that, Sean. Please.
Okay. I'm used to technology glitches. We just deal with it. We go with the flow. So thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to speak to you. And while I'm grateful that the school committee is advocating for a level service budget, I urge you to also include a cost of living adjustment for our hardworking and dedicated staff members. This adjustment is not a luxury, but a necessity to ensure that our staff can continue to provide the high-quality education and services that our students deserve without having to secure additional employment. As you know, the cost of living in our area has increased significantly in the past few years due to factors such as inflation, food costs, housing, transportation, healthcare, and war. According to the Bureau of Labor statistics, since 2021, the Consumer Price Index for our region rose by 11.85%. This means that the purchasing power of our staff salaries has decreased by the same amount, making it harder for them to afford their basic needs and expenses. The situation is not sustainable and is not fair to our staff who have devoted their careers to educating and supporting our students. Our staff are the backbone of our school system, and they deserve to be compensated fairly and competitively. Without a cost of living adjustment, we risk losing our talented and experienced staff to other districts or professions that can offer them better pay and benefits. This would have a negative impact on the quality and continuity of our programs and ultimately on the academic achievement and well-being of our students. I urge you to approve a budget that includes a cost of living increase and to show your appreciation and respect for our staff who have worked tirelessly and selflessly, especially during the challenging times of the pandemic. They have adapted to new modes of teaching and learning, implemented health and safety protocols, and supported the social and emotional needs of our students and families. And we continue to do that today. They have gone above and beyond their duties, and they deserve to be rewarded for their efforts. Thank you for your time and attention and for your service to the students and staff of East Hampton.
Thank you, Sean. Kira, go ahead if you're able to unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. My name is Kira Henninger. I'm a parent of two fifth graders at Mountain View School. I have appreciated the thoughtful conversation that has occurred at the budget subcommittee meetings leading up to this. I'm going to be brief. I'm just going to continue to echo what I've stated. We need more than a level services budget. I understand that this is a tough year, and I really encourage you to think about long-term planning and how we can add in the services and the gaps that we have in our student offerings. And absolutely, we can do no less than a level services budget. And I also would like to add, as I have previously, that the teachers deserve a raise that would meet their needs. As Sean said, they have gone above and beyond. And honestly, the teachers are what are keeping me in East Hampton schools. Things can be really challenging with kids and navigating that as a parent. And the people who have shown up again and again for me and my kids are those teachers. And so I just really want to reiterate that that is why families are choosing East Hampton is because of the staff and the care that our kids get while they're in school there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Do I have any other for public speak? There are no other in the room. I see no other online. So it is 4:45, and I will close my speak. Thank you all. All right, the next item on our agenda is to turn this over to our Director of Business Services, Nick Bernier, for a review, discussion, overview, where we are now with the proposed operating budget.
All right, well, I'm just going to kind of give you a summary of where we're at. And you know, kind of where we think we need to move to, if that makes sense. You know, my role is sort of unique. I meet with you folks several times as we go through the budget process or it goes to the full school committee. You know, I'm also in contact with municipal officials, you know, who look at the budget from a much larger picture than we do. Of course, every department's going to advocate for what they want and need. So, you know, in conversations that I've had along the way, you know, there's indications that the 11.77% increase that we had discussed at last week's meeting is going to be, you know, too high. So I was encouraged to go and look at a few things, which I did. A couple that are relatively, I don't want to say easy, but you know, doable. And then a few that you're likely not going to have an appetite for. But, you know, I was told to look at a couple of things. So I'll just kind of go through where we are and where, you know, at least the direction in which I think we need to go. So to reiterate, you know, there's a lot of folks in this meeting who haven't previous ones. So, you know, the reasons for the significant increases this year, out-of-district tuition is a huge driver. Not only has there been an increase in placements for some students, but the cost of those placements will increase 4.69% per the wonderful Operational Services Division who sets that pricing. That is going to put us at about a $450,504 increase over this year's costs. Electricity is another driver. People see it at home, obviously, with their electric bills. When we have buildings the size of a high school in Mountain View, you know, you can imagine what that electric bill looks like every year. We've already spent over about $240,000 on electricity this year so far, from July to now. And then we only got about $40,000 left in that account, which is not going to cover from now until June. So there'll be an increase in that for next year, I think, based on usage. Vocational tuition, I estimate a $189,928 increase based on the projected number of students that will either attend Smith Vocational or C-Tech. That's based on an 87-student assumption. It could be slightly higher or slightly lower than that, but the information is current as of what I'm privy to right now. The cost of moving all of our ESER grant-funded staff to the general fund would be $497,410 based on this year's salaries. As you know, we do have unknown personnel costing for next year while we go through negotiations. So, you know, any salary numbers you're hearing in here are going to be based on this current year. I cannot make assumptions at what the contract will settle at. And then the cost of moving the other stuff that's in the ESER grant to the general fund is $207,806. That includes software, PD expenses. We moved some substitute educator costs to ESER for this year to get this current year's budget as low as we could. But I mean, that has to come back. You need subs. And that's software, too. I mean, I really did a deep dive with Julianne Levin. I know she communicated with Mr. Evans and Jill over at Mountain View. And, you know, what do we need to keep here? I mean, some stuff, you know, was really just for remote learning and it can go, but some of it's screeners. And it's so important to have that data, not only literacy screeners, but social-emotional learning screeners as well. I mean, we're, you know, as was mentioned during the public speak, I mean, the needs are very high, but we're also teaching whole people here. It's not just an academic piece. And, you know, it would be a detriment to pull that away because, you know, it's hard to support kids if you don't have data on baselines, progress, things like that. So, and lastly, specialized transportation, that's going to go up almost $92,000. I mean, the cost of that is, it's everywhere. I was talking to some folks at a roundtable last Friday about their transportation increases. I heard from some districts upwards of 45% increase. I mean, I don't know how you, you know, I don't know how you foot that. We're lucky to not be in that boat, but it's still likely a large increase. So the next part here is just kind of the chart showing exactly what you saw at last week's meeting. Nothing's changed there. It shows you where that 11.77% came from. However, in my conversations I've had, you know, around the topic of this probably needs to be lower. Between our last meeting and now, I can decrease the out-of-district tuition by $74,221.24 due to attrition. That was not known a week ago. It's known now. So that can lower it a bit. And I can use an additional $200,000 of school choice funds to offset next year's budget and still position us to be able to, you know, get through FY26. It's after that that it's going to be, you know, problematic. You know, FY27, you know, I do have backup chart here to kind of show what that's going to do. You know, it's always a good idea to keep some reserve funding around because emergencies do happen. And, you know, we're no different. But this is also a tough budget year. And I think it was expected to an extent that as the ESER money ran out, the use of school choice funding was increased. So the problem I'm seeing now is a deficit that we'll see at the end of this year. So some school choice money is going to have to go towards that. At this time, I can't give you an exact figure because kind of early in the game. And I don't know what circuit breaker extraordinary relief is going to come in either. I'm highly sure we're going to qualify for extraordinary relief. And from that other pot of money that I've mentioned a couple of times, the extraordinary relief has to be expended by June 30th of '24. So that's all going towards this year's budget, thankfully, will help offset any deficit. The other pot, technically, it's the same circuit breaker reimbursement we would get next year. You're just getting some of it early. So once I see what we get, I'm going to need to make some choices about, you know, how much do I want to kick into this current year's budget to offset a deficit? How much can we hopefully put towards next year? Unfortunately, I'm not going to have that figure till after you pass the budget. We're not going to know till May. So I will, you know, whatever, and I get that figure, I can look at some scenarios, run some models, you know, to try to position us to be in a good place for next year and beyond. The other thing, special transportation does not, that's not part of extraordinary relief. It is part of regular circuit breaker reimbursement. So whatever we get next year will include transportation. The extraordinary relief will not. So my goal is to get this year's deficit as low as possible so we have more school choice for the future. So if I do that, I take out the 74 grand from out-of-district tuition attrition, I kick over the additional $200,000 of school choice money, I can get down to 10.31% just by doing those two things. You can see by expense type, I mean, you know, salary decreases a bit. That's because that's where the school choice money is going. That, you know, that chart there does not indicate any kind of cuts. It's just your funding source. Contracted services are still high because that's your out-of-district tuition that falls in that bucket. Supplies go down a bit, which did not change from last week. Other expenses goes up, not a terrible amount. That's largely electricity. Which, yeah, electricity, believe it or not, is considered an other expense. Heat, for some reason, is a supply. I don't know why, and now's not the time to talk about it. But the electricity is driving that 8.05% increase. Intergovernmental is tuition we pay to other places, which would be other mass public schools or the two vocational schools. So that's a large increase, as I mentioned before, and non-net is transportation. So you see the special ed transportation driver there. But, you know, we got it down, you know, almost a one and a half percent just by doing that, which is, you know, something. If you look at it by location and expense type, you'll see that the Mountain View budget goes down. But that's again where the school choice money got applied. The high school remained the same. Special ed went down a bit because of the tuition reduction there. The district stayed the same. So, you know, we were able to do that work. Looking at it by cost type, okay, on the last page of what you have, personnel went down to 7.94% with, you know, with the school choice money being applied there. Fixed costs went down a bit because of the tuition and variable costs really didn't do anything. Because, but we don't have a lot of variable costs. I mean, that's where your curriculum purchases and your PD and your, you know, things like that, building-based budgets, you know. And there's only so much you can cut off for that type of stuff. And you're not going to break a budget by, you know, cutting pencils. You're just not. I mean, your large drivers of costs are personnel and tuition, really. Those are, you know, what you're looking at. So I broke down the fixed costs into some detail. When I met with the mayor last week, I thought that was important to do, just, you know, because fixed cost numbers are number, but, you know, what goes into it. So it's utilities, voc tuition, special ed tuition, regular day and voc transportation, special ed transportation, homeless and foster care transportation, which is, you know, also high. And then everything else I grouped into other, which can, that was legal fees, instructional services that we're bound to provide, and our copy or lease payment, you know, things like that. There weren't a ton of other. So that's what all those fixed costs are. For additions, you know, we really have, you know, sent the message that we're just really focusing on keeping the services that we have and the staff that's been funded by ESER because the, you know, the needs are still there. You've heard me say it every meeting so far. It's, you know, a switch didn't flip because it's been a couple of years since the darkest days of COVID. The effects are still there, for sure. You know, there is, you know, we are proposing not replacing a vacant position at Mountain View right now. It's been vacant since, I think, November. Hasn't been filled yet. So this budget here would just not replace that.
What was that position of service specifically?
It was a special ed position in a specific program over there, which I don't know the name, but.
Or one of the, I get them confused. Need another tutorial, I don't know.
Yeah, the students in that program are currently, they've been distributed to other places. This budget also proposes reallocating Mountain View Elementary position to the middle school side to be an interventionist. We have discussed that our intervention at the middle school, you know, could use some work.
Yeah.
And, you know, we do want to include that in this budget. Because it's, you know, if you don't do that work, then you're not going to see improvement in places. So now we get to the unpopular part. In order to further decrease costs, you know, as I said, I was told to look at a few things. None of this I can personally support or think we even can do. But numbers are numbers, and I was told to find them. So if we reduced further four teachers, it would take place at the elementary level. It would increase class size in grades two to five to 25 or 26 students, which I do not believe anybody would have an appetite for. As well as, you know, you're looking at class sizes that large, it becomes really, really difficult for.
It exacerbates all the problems.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, it makes those needs that are still there worse. Like, you know, there's only so many things in a classroom somebody can manage. And then if you, you know, add in any, you know, students that move into the district throughout the year, you're then looking at like, you know, something that's not sustainable. So end up adding a position to cover that during the course of the year. So another thing that was brought up was taking a look at what eliminating the high school buses would do. Because we're not legally mandated to provide that. However, it's really not going to save us anything because we have, well, we have 11 buses. One's a midday LPVEC route, but the other 10, nine of them go to the elementary school, right? And when it's not there, it's going to Smith-Voc, which we have to transport those students to Smith. And we're paying the same for a two or three-tier bus. Like, we're not paying by the tier based on the way our contract's set up. So at best, we could probably consolidate a couple elementary routes and save about $41,000. But on the other side of that coin, you're then going to lose a ton of bus pass revenue, which, you know, we use to offset the bus contract. So, you know, you're probably doing a little better than breaking even there, but not much. And you're also going to exacerbate the chronic absentee issue that's being discussed, you know, throughout the state. If we all of a sudden remove that transportation, you're going to get kids not going to school. And then you're going to have to pay to provide support services so they can get caught up.
Party.
Yeah, and that's disruptive, and it's not getting kids where we need and want them to be.
That's $41,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Without factoring in what revenue you're losing. Exactly.
Yeah, that's, I don't think that's something. And plus, like, you know, right now, we do transport people that wouldn't legally qualify, but, you know, we sell bus passes and, you know, and I think that's something families that become accustomed to and like. And, you know, a lot of that would go away.
Locking a school from Loudville route, you know.
Yeah, and I mean, if we were to do that, I mean, you're going to, I think families would not be okay with that. And, you know, we're not going to get kids to school that way either. If we were to do all that, I could get this down to 8.68, which is, you know, another, you know, under 2% from where we got to midway through this meeting. However, you're doing that at an extreme cost, and you're going to end up with further costs down the road if you try to, you know, do those two things. But as I said, I was asked to look at some.
We're already dancing on the next segment. As you said, looking at FY27, very leery because we're spending down school choice reserves at a really aggressive rate because we.
Yeah, so, you know, the numbers are out there for you to chew on. But I, you know, I think this would come with problems. And I have a feeling a lot of attendees in this meeting would agree with me on that point.
I think everyone would, yeah.
By using it, two hundred thousand is our, uh, sum that's left. Roughly, yep, about a hundred, two, school choice kids, half a million dollars.
If we, well, if we get through this year with what I think I'm going to have to kick in from school choice to do it.
We have a deficit this year, right.
My, my, my assumption is three hundred fifty thousand, but, I mean, I'm usually pretty good, but I, without that circuit breaker revenue knowledge, I can't, I don't know. Um, but if we base it on this number, and this is, you know, this document, I keep a nice little school choice projection spreadsheet. It's a living document, um, it gets updated frequently, but, you know, at the end of the year, and I'll do another forecast in April when we get closer to the, the end, you know, but we, according to my projection, will have at the end of this year, eight hundred and eighty four thousand, three hundred thirty two dollars left in school choice. You add next year's projected revenue, which I think will be about six hundred seventy thousand. I, I don't think it's going to be higher, like, when, when the state kicks out their projections, they take what you get this year and they move it forward to next year. But that's assuming everything stays the same, and it doesn't. I mean, we may have a couple more kids choice out, we may have a couple choice in. Some students who choice in have some special, um, special ed requirements, and that increases the revenue that comes in. But maybe a couple of those kids graduate, like, I don't, I don't look at it on that level of detail, and it's really not my, my business to look at kids' needs like that, you know, it's, obviously, it's.
If we use it, then we've set, that's setting ourselves up for next budget year.
But, you know, I, I would then, you know, next year, if I have those numbers right, and we budget for FY twenty six, a million of school choice, which this district has done over the last few years, that would leave us with only fourteen thousand dollars left at the end of FY twenty six.
So with all respect.
How about, so, a couple of notes for the public. This first iteration at the eleven point seven seven percent already factored in a large contribution from the school choice.
It factored in a million, yeah.
Right, so you're talking about an additional two hundred thousand on top of that. And then I had another point that I've forgotten, or maybe we'll get back to that. This one, oh, the deficit from this year.
Yeah.
Couple, right, is the original production.
Deficit may be lower, I mean, I, you know, i- it's, some of it also just depends on like, you know, does something break between now and June?
Do you get one, you know, costly IEP placement, do you get one costly out of district placement?
Does something?
Half a million dollars on the shot.
Do we have a leak in a wall?
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, yeah, you know, like, uh, but, you know, if nothing happens, like, you, you know, the internet doesn't go down with a huge problem that comes, you know what I mean? If like, if none of that happens, then the deficit will be less than.
Right.
You know, because when I do a forecast in February, I tend to be a little heavier on it, like, I think they're going to spend this much, I mean, payroll's payroll, it's just what's left, here's our staff. That's, that, I mean, there'll be, you know, maybe a little bit of coming and going between now and the end of the year, but probably not a ton. Uh, maybe an unpaid day here or there for somebody that might not have any paid time off, but, hey, that's not a budget breaker, any direction. Um, so, you know, if we get, we get lucky and nothing breaks between now and June thirtieth, then, you know. But a- at the end of last year, I had a, a thing at the high school break, Larry had to replace something where it was like eleven thousand dollars. I got hit with that in June. I mean, luckily, we were in a pretty good place at the end of last year, and it wasn't like, you know, detrimental, but um, this year, that's a bigger problem, but I get into late April. Again, payroll's payroll, that'll, that's easy to calculate. I can look at what's been spent out of the rest of accounts and, and, you know, say, all right, well, m- maybe we're not going to spend as much here. Or, and, you know, that's okay, and, and then by then I might have a circuit breaker, you know, uh, number two, and, and then I can kinda, you know, do my, um, my model.
When something goes around, like, when something comes up that you weren't expecting, where do you typically start your search for that? I mean, it might be paid for.
Well, it, it depends on what it is, like, if, if it's something in the maintenance realm, I, I mean, you know, our, our maintenance, our facilities director, I mean, he's, he's got a sizable budget. And he's very good at doing things internally, I mean, I, I.
Years of practice.
Well, and, and his whole department, I mean, he's got a great crew of custodians and, and the maintenance mechanic, and, and they really, they do every single thing they can to keep it internal. It's very rare that I'm paying for an outside contractor to come in. Um, you know, the exception for that is when there's control issues with like the heating and air conditioning. So much of that's computerized, and it's just like, nobody understands it besides the vendor that installed it, so like, you know, that's one thing that like, you know, it might happen. Um, if it's a, i- if it's a, like a cafeteria related expense, I'll go right to the cafeteria revolving account. Um, you know, a steamer, uh, broke this year at the high school, you know, in the past, that was a facilities budget problem because we didn't have any money in the cafeteria account, but now we do, so that's all going there. Um, so it really depends what the expense is, if it's an IT thing, I mean, it's kind of gotta be general fund out of the IT budget. Um, if it's a special ed tuition I didn't expect, that's when you start looking at how much money's left in your two forty grant. Um, you know, so we, we certainly do look at, you know, where can I put this? I mean, you know, i- i- if we get a, a student that moves in now, I, they're sending district is still fiscally responsible for their program for the rest of this year. And if they move in after April first, they're sending district is responsible for it next year. Because otherwise, you'd never be able to budget.
Right.
Um, so, you know, just hope nothing happens.
Eventually, you get answers to these, but not while we're planning this.
Speaking of that, and a couple of people have alluded to it, we're in the process right now of negotiating with the two unions that work in district to services schools, and it's, if it's a difficult decision to be in to vote, you know, to then learn, you know, but.
I think what's helpful to look at with that is when we have the other, the third page up, and we're looking at like, um, these steps that you, we could take, right, here's just models that we were asked to run. If we reduce four full-time equivalent peaking positions, we're talking about two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. That's a chunk of money, not, that plus other stuff is still only not making up two percent of that overall budget. And we were told, we're not going to get funded at this eleven percent. So we're not just already in a rock and hard place of the current positions we have, but how are we going? And if you look at the financial impact, let's say everyone gets a one percent or a two percent or a three percent or a four percent increase on their current salary. I mean, we're so far above two hundred and sixty five. Like, the, the reverse of that, we're just, we're routine, a rock and a really hard place, and the money has to come from somewhere, and it's a bit of a puzzle.
I'm interested, as a finance committee, in the three of us kind of taking a look, um, a comparison of similar communities in the area, just to get a sense of, you know, what percentage of their annual operating budgets are they applying for their school districts?
That's a great question now. Uh, that's a great question, tell us about that.
Uh, well, I, uh, got this information directly from the Division of Local Services Municipal Finance Data Dashboard. If you're ever bored, I'm telling you, you can find a wealth of information on that thing. Unfortunately, I couldn't find a way to export it to Excel to make it easy to work on, so I had to hand enter this.
Why do they do that?
Um, but, yeah, well, I, I, maybe there is a way, and I just didn't have time to figure it out, uh, you know, kind of busy afternoon. Um, but in any event, I looked at some local districts. I looked at Amherst, Belcher Town, East Hampton, Hadley, Hatfield, Holyoke, Northampton, South Hadley, Southampton and West Hampton. I thought that was a.
Yeah, that's great.
Decent array of comparators. Um, and I looked at, uh, FY nineteen through twenty three, that's what was there. A couple of communities didn't have their FY twenty three data up, which means that their audit's not done yet. And the information hasn't been given to the state for published, uh, publication, including East Hamptons. However, you can look in the East Hampton FY twenty three budget book and find the figure there, so I was able to do that. Um, I, I'll just give you the average over the last five years. I, I think reading all this would, you know, probably put you to sleep, but, um, what, what this indicates is the percentage of a total operating budget that, um, that, uh, towns or cities, uh, put towards education. So, you know, the whole operating budget includes a ton of things, education is always your largest cost. Um, but, you know, you've got public safety in there, you've got DPW, you've got unclassified, which a lot of that's like insurance and retirement contributions and whatnot, but, you know, you throw all that in a pie chart and, you know, here's the percentages, so. Uh, for the last, um, and this does not.
Clarifying question, is this the percentage of the district budget that comes from the city, or is this the percentage of the city budget that goes?
The percentage of the city budget that's applied to education, okay, thank you.
And this does not include any like grants or, you know, any, uh, it's just general fund expenditures here. Um, so over the last five fiscal years, this is nineteen to twenty three, the twenty four data won't be available till like a year from now. Uh, you can only get that from budget books. Um, but, uh, Amherst did an average of fifty two point four one percent of their, uh, town operating budget goes towards education. Uh, Belcher Town was fifty two point eight six, East Hampton was thirty nine point two three. Uh, Hadley was thirty eight point nine two, Hatfield is fifty two point zero four four. Holyoke was forty five point six seven, Northampton was forty one point three nine. Uh, South Hadley, forty eight point four one, Southampton sixty four point eight one, and West Hampton sixty point seven.
Can I turbo scan that on the quick, like, say, can we get, yeah?
Um, so the average of those comparators is, uh, forty nine point three four, so.
If you can use that to my, I'm going to turbo scan it, and then, oh, you have your phone to do it, I don't know what you're talking about, so.
You can use any of the PDF, I don't know.
I have an answer, don't come for me.
For me, we're coming for you, this is incredibly helpful. Yeah, we, this explains, well, it seems like this explains a lot of why this is not sustainable. We run into this problem every single year, that what your take on this is also, that this is second.
My take on this is, these are numbers.
Okay, understood.
Are.
If I'm asking a lawyer a question, you're not going to answer it directly.
I mean, it, it just indicates what different places spend on, I, and, and I mean, you can get those numbers for any portion of their budget. So you can see what Holyoke spends on public safety, what, you know. Um, you, you can, you know, find all that there. Um, getting a state average would take more time, I mean, I could do it, I just did not.
No, this is exactly what.
People around us make the most sense.
It would be nice.
Exactly right, and then, and you're not worried about, like, you know, we don't compare to Needham, Waltham, we don't compare to Lowell, Tewksbury, like, it's just, yeah.
And the thing about us that makes us, you know, kind of, I don't want to say in a unique position, but in a perhaps more difficult position than some other places, is.
You talk about the student opportunity.
Yeah, we, we don't get a lot of Student Opportunity Act funding through chapter seventy. I mean, that, that, that act was, the, the act was passed to provide more aid to districts to really meet the needs of selected populations such as, uh, English learners, special ed students, um, low income students, and, you know.
Lower middle class curves.
Speed gap, like in Medicare.
Exactly right, and all kinds of things, all kinds of subsidies, like your two mortgage assistance too. You make too much to qualify, but not enough to qualify without.
And, and, yeah, it really hasn't done a lot for a place like East Hampton. I mean, there were a couple of years where our chapter seventy increase was higher, including this current year. A lot of that was driven by the inflation factor that gets applied to the formula, but that, that lowered drastically between last year and, or this year and next year. Um, but, you know, another thing we don't get is rural aid, like Hadley gets rural aid.
Right.
We don't. Um, you know, some suburban districts, you know, that they're, just that their tax rate is higher, and they kick in more money towards education that way, like, we, you know, we don't fall into those buckets. So, you know, we're left in a place where, where we can face some tight budget.
When you say chapter seventy, that's Student Opportunity Act, you have the same thing?
The Student Opportunity Act really, uh, it amended the chapter seventy formula is what it did. The chapter seventy formula was created back in nineteen ninety three when Ed reform was passed. And it's kind of the formula for allocating resources to, uh, state aid resources to districts. Um, you know, I, I could give you a whole primer on that, but again, I don't see any pillows in the room, so.
Tell me if this makes sense, that, so we are not seen as a district in need of a substantial amount of the Student Opportunity Act money. So by correlating that with if we're using a very low percent of our operating budget, the state is saying to us, the reason you don't get this opportunity act money as much as other, is that you have enough money in your budget, or you should have enough money to allocate.
You need resources, they identify.
You don't need it as much, meaning that we should be able to sustain.
Or you don't have, you're not eligible, is what they're saying, not that you don't need it.
But eligibility would come with the need, you're eligible when you have a need.
I mean, there's.
But that's not how this is determined.
Poverty line being set, right, and unlivable, like, we have to go, the state has to go like two hundred percent of the poverty line, and that's still not.
And they can't capture all the relevant data, like, they don't take into account, for example, the number of children we service with IEP and the costs associated with that, that's not something that's standard, right? But in their eyes, we don't have enough need compared to other districts.
Yes, so most of the, most of the areas get the large amount of money are urban.
Central, right. Which need it, but we can't create a student opportunity project as this thing that has solved all these problems.
But I'm just thinking in my head, yeah, we're not, and we're not, we're not getting these funds, but we're also using a lower percentage of our operating budget. So if we use more, that would short the gap in some ways.
It is also worth noting that we are always above minimum net school spending, however.
Which is set ridiculously low, like the legal law in MTL, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, and, you know, as part of the chapter seventy formula, uh, every district, uh, is, gets what's called the foundation budget, which is the minimum amount that the state calculates you need to spend to be able to educate your population. I believe out of the three hundred and whatever districts that there are in the state, only fifteen of them are minimum spending districts. Um, and they literally spend that every year. We'd spend between eight to ten percent of, of it, I believe, over the last few years. We're always looking at like about a hundred and eight, hundred and nine, hundred and ten percent. Um, that'll be a page in the budget book, you can see like the change over time. Um, so, you know, from the state's eyes, we're contributing enough to, you know, meet the needs of our, our population, um, based on the chapter seventy formula. Now, our low income numbers put us in group eight, I think there's what, eleven or twelve groups, twelve would be like the most, uh, the largest amount of poverty in your district, so we're in eight. Uh, we'll still be in eight next year, um, and it's based on your free and reduced lunch percentage, basically. Um, you know, there's a ton of other things that go into the formula, some of it includes your property tax levy, your equalized valuation of property, like, there's a whole tab that calculates what the municipal contribution should be. But the purpose of the chapter seventy formula is to wean districts off the state aid over time, those that could. So as the years go on, provided your financial situation is like, not bad, they expect you to contribute a little bit more over time, your foundation budget goes up, and your local required contribution also goes up. And ours did go up from this current year to next year. So they want the city to, to kick in more, so I, you know, we're a minimum chapter seven eight district, a seventy eight district for next year. Uh, as are another two hundred and eleven communities.
Can I then ask, and for the public too, I'm just learning everything along with everybody else. How does a city inquire about reallocating money? I'm sure that, obviously, this is a bigger question and a lot of steps, but if you're at a percent of your budget towards schools, and you would seek to increase that percentage, what?
Well, the city can kick in as much as they want above the.
At any time.
Any city can.
Any time, and passing.
You know, well, there's frameworks around specifics, like, and how we're, how we're governed by our charter. So the first plea would be to whomever sits in the mayor's chair. They're going to write a budget that includes all departments, including the school department. They're going to submit that proposal to the city council, so that would be your second one. If you're satisfied with what the mayor has included, you're then asking the city council, who cannot increase, but can decrease budgets. Sure, that's, that's the only right they have per our home rule charter.
There's other, yeah. Yeah, a clarification, I think, is what part of what you're asking for, is there is no avenue for us to say to the state, you screwed it up. We actually need a bit more.
Right, no, I don't know, yes, no, the state's not going to say, we goofed, but I'm saying, we, what can we do?
We hit a short call in the year, there is an appropriations that, again, is going to begin with the mayor. It has to be signed off on and approved by the mayor, and then is submitted to city council and has to get a vote there.
But if we do appropriations, Jesse starts looking at our district going like, wow, these guys can't play.
Why are you not budgeting appropriate?
That's not something you want to do all.
Exactly, that's not a model, even though the police can do that, fire can do that.
They're not.
They're not. Jesse, right.
The other thing I want to say, as you were talking about that, it all sort of clicks together, like, when the state is putting this model out with chapter seventy formula, but also things like how are we building Mountain View? They built those classrooms to house, to house, to have like twenty five kids in a classroom. That is what the state says, we have set district values at a lower number than that, right? We, that's one of the things that we're coming up against, our plea that, like, you're not giving us enough money to keep our. Our plea that like, you're not giving us enough money to keep our class sizes at twenty, falls on deaf ears, because they're like, well, we said your class size should be twenty-five. So Nick's, not Nick's, but the model where we reduce teachers and we bump up class sizes to basically what the state says they should be. Gets us, but that's, you know, closer to that percentage that feels more probable. But we have a district have over and over said from the educator side, from the staff side, from the support side, from parent side, that we don't wanna do that. Which is why we're in this place of like, the only solution is, if you're gonna keep the money, like you have to get it from the city. Just clarifying.
Yeah, when you asked me that question earlier about, I guess, kicking in more money, were you referring to net school spending? Or were you referring to Chapter Seventy? When I said that, you know, any district can kick in as much as they want, that was answering that in the reference of net school spending. Like, if you take a look at different communities across the state, like, you know, some, it's like a hundred fifty percent. You know, but those are your Westons and your Wellesleys that, you know. One of the chief, I, I guess, complaints over the years about the Chapter Seventy formula is it does not close the gap. Between, you know, ones that can afford to do that and ones that, that can't. It just doesn't, you know? But as I said, we're always above minimum. Uh, we always meet it, no problem. I've gotta report that to.
It's a bar that sits on the floor. For the public tip, for half people, understand that law, that law is meant to prevent like. Nearly criminal activity on the part of municipality and neglecting the budget education of their children. You know, like at what point does the law finally step in at that point, that bad?
Well, to quote a very wise member of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's called the foundation budget for a reason. You can build the house of the foundation, but you probably want walls and roofs to go with.
So I guess our next question is, we've determined, we're looking at this, we've, we've placed it seventeen ways from Sunday. So the next question is.
This is really.
What resources does the city have left? And how much more can the city afford to contribute to what we're determining and proving with a lot of evidence is necessary? Just for level service. Let's put a tiny asterisk in that also. Another, there are Massachusetts learning standards that we're supposed to be enacting that we don't currently, we currently are not able to provide in our curriculum. That is gonna require a higher financial contribution. We're not even making that argument to the city at this point. This is just, let us maintain where we sit now and continue to heal these children. From what we've been through.
And not to harp on the point, but it's gonna come down to this committee and then the school committee's. Decision about the, the value, like what our district values are and how we align with that. And I feel confident in what our values. I know means that we have a difficult, it's like, it either passes here easily, or then we have to go, you know, fight for it at the city level. And that's, we're kind of signing up to do that because.
Reface this, right? So we'll vote on it in this finance meeting. We'll then, whatever we approve in this finance meeting, we'll get moved to the full school committee. The full school committee will vote on that, and then that will be sent to the mayor, who will take that into consideration, put some number in their budget. To present to city council.
And then when we find that number out, more work will be, maybe, potentially, potentially needed to be done. We'll see what that number comes out at. I mean, are there other questions? Like, are you, is our next step a vote on this eight? The ten point, uh, three-one percent budget out of finance or what else?
My, my recommendation would be to use the placeholder meeting for next week. You know.
To ruminate on all of this?
Yeah, I think maybe the committee, the committee. Kind of chew on it. I think there's a couple of more conversations that can be had.
Our public hearing, we're representing this for the committee to vote on it. It's not until the twenty-sixth.
I mean, that, that, that makes it harder for me to do my budget book. I'm not gonna lie. Uh, you know, in a timely fashion, because, you know, the twelfth. Um, will be that last meeting where you would vote to push it to the full committee. So that gives me the thirteenth, which I've got the virtual PD all day long, which I mean, I can multitask because it's virtual. I'm still, I don't really wanna be multitasking a budget book, because, you know, of all things to mess up, I don't want that to be the thing. Then I got the fourteenth. And, you know, and, and the fifteenth is a Friday, and then the eighteenth is it. Like, I've gotta have that done and on the website by the nineteenth. Because it's gotta be seven days prior to the hearing per charter. Uh, and I gotta get the legal notice into the paper as well.
Are you available to meet your finance right before the next meeting?
We have it scheduled.
Yeah, we had a placeholder. I mean, that said, I'll, I'll get it done. I mean. Four thirty, yeah.
We got a better room for it.
And then.
Do you want an hour and a half or do you wanna do five?
No, I wanna eat dinner, so.
Four thirty is, you choose, four thirty is a good time.
And then, you know, but, I mean, not that I necessarily see a ton that can change. Between now and then, I, I just, you know, I, I think.
The public times to win, sway and let us know, you know, are we mistaken in what we believe our district values to be? You know.
I mean, I, I will.
Cutting four teachers or, I, I think I'm reading the community right, that that would not be preferred. It might be more than four, because if we can't. The other thing is that, again, circle back to this, this doesn't include, we need to appropriately compensate. Educators and support unit next year, and that's not even, we, we can't bargain in good faith and do a budget in good faith and have.
Yeah, like I wanna think about whether or not I'm even okay with the ten point.
I know, so if we put in ten point three-one percent, what happens?
We're losing two hundred thousand dollar.
Exactly.
That we rely on for negotiations, right?
Neither of negotiations, but just like, if, yeah, let's say we, we end up settling on some percent. Uh, COLA increase or whatever, uh, it's called the negotiations. If it turns out to be a figure of, not looking at the percentages, but let's say it's like, is it a cost four hundred thousand dollars in additional salary? Where's that four hundred thousand dollars come from? Once the budget's passed and like.
Or you have to ask for another appropriation in the city council.
Which again, would have to be approved by the same authorities that are telling us.
We'll do whatever we have to do.
Right, we'll do anything, but there's no. Just because you file an appropriation doesn't mean the approb, appropriation will be approved.
But also, when you hear from the public and they're saying that they're, they're coming to our schools because of our teachers. To look at our teachers and saying, we think you're doing a great job. But it's been tough, so we'd like you to work for less money and less people are gonna help you.
Yeah, or here's a little raise, we're gonna fire three of your friends.
So keep it up.
It, it just is.
As someone who works in a building, building morale, building, it's a big part of it. It's not just about the teachers working in their classrooms, but it's about. Blabberation, collegiality with people around them, knowing that their friends are safe, their coworkers are safe, their support staff is safe. They have that backup. They drive to school knowing emotionally they're supported and not just about the kids, but the staff.
So on that note, people are hearing a lot of concerning stuff tonight. It's not time to panic yet. I would say, always be worried, never panic. Reach out to us if you have comments. I stole that from Dan Park.
I really love that. I'm gonna use that in my life. Always be worried.
Don't panic, like, we're aware, we're gonna do everything in our power. Talk to your friends calmly.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is not something that anybody.
Tune in on the twelfth and definitely tune in on the twenty-sixth.
Not the director of business services, not the school committee. And so, wow, but it just, it means this is what's our, this is like coming down the pipe for us. And we have a lot of. Potentially difficult work to do.
Right.
We have this and we'll get whatever, I mean, that's what we're here for.
That's right.
And that's all we'll do.
Thank you, Nick, though, because you. With clear, concise information. It's always consistent. I never come into a meeting thinking, well, what was the last time you said? It's, it's very easy to follow along with and it's, it's very responsibly done, so.
Yeah, thank you. It really is incredible. The numbers whisper.
I'm a straight shooter.
It's really helpful, so we can take this and talk to city council, talk to the finance committee, talk to the mayor, talk to each other. You know, what, what are we talking about with these numbers here?
So I will, um, you know, as I said, I think there's a little more conversation that could be had and a little bit more of a, a look here. But, um, I, I, you know, my next Tuesday. It'll be vote time. Um, I will go ahead and start budget book stuff, assuming not much is gonna change, because most of the legwork will be done. If anything changes, it's just changing a number here, a number there. It's not like detrimental.
Just, we don't need to take a vote, but could we take a little consensus that the three of us would reject the eight percent? And that it's somewhere between the ten and the eleven?
Hundred percent. I, I do wanna hear, have the public input come in. But that.
Just that that means, if that means you have to pursue further avenue or fewer avenues.
Right, that, and that limits what you have to do with the next. How many possible outcomes there are, iterations.
So clearly none of us know how your job works.
Well, you know, we need business managers, so if anybody would like to do an internship with me, they'd have to.
Okay, you heard it here first. I guess it isn't unpaid. That was a joke.
Well, also though, I think that it's important. A lot of times people will say, well, you know, people that may not know exactly what's going on in the buildings. Well, why, what do they have? They have a lot of extra things. And the buildings look gorgeous, so that could be something that could throw people off. But when you look at the things that I think is proposed to cut just to get under that level that he was, was asked to. View eight point six eight, he's cutting things that, when you talk about staff, you talk about, that's, that's, that's the most essential piece to our building. When you talk about buses, sure, you could make kids walk to school, but if they're not coming on the bus already and they're missing absence and they're having absences. Then they're certainly not gonna come, which is gonna affect the whole community.
And bear in mind, those kids are already walking to school. They live less than two miles from high school. More than two miles from the high school.
It's absurd. Um, he's not word a lot today.
I'd say on that one, point two is that the federal accountability and, and the shape. Coming year is on attendance, attendance at school, so. Especially in the high school, they're not gonna walk one or two miles. Back and forth, and by law, you don't have to provide it. But the point is, on attendance issues, which could then make it an unperforming school district. Which would then, then what we would have is you'd have to put more money in to fix the problem you actually caused.
Right.
So it would actually cost more than just having the buses stay.
And even potentially go to state oversight, right? Yeah, so we, that, it's just unacceptable.
We've seen our neighbor go through that.
Yeah, in fact, um, we've been there, the, watching it happen. We're, I'm wondering, like, is there a world where the iterations we keep on the table are the ten point three-one and like. A some eleven percent.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know that we can't estimate, because we're bargaining in good faith and we're making a budget in good faith, but like, is there a, a way that we can? I don't know. I don't really know what I'm asking.
I, I mean, either way, that eleven point seven seven is gone because of the tuition reduction.
Right, so it's seventy-four thousand dollars less than that.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, part of that reduction is the two hundred thousand.
That's what I'm worried about. What if we put the two hundred, what if we go with this attrition, seventy-four thousand dollar out? But keep the two hundred thousand dollars of school choice in.
In the general fund?
In the general fund.
Well, then you're gonna be looking at like an eleven point four or five percent increase. I don't know if that would be palatable.
I do think, yeah, I think it's possible. I'm gonna give this city some, some grace in the benefit of the doubt. And saying the conversation that we've had tonight has been really illustrative and maybe seeing exactly, I, I think it's responsible for a manager to say. I don't know, take that, that number feels a little high. I, I don't feel so great about that. Go work on that, come back to me with something else. And when you come back and say what this will mean. Is four full-time teachers at a minimum and a bus that we probably shouldn't get rid of because it might cost us more. So I don't know, maybe five or six full-time teachers, then maybe, maybe that changes the conversation with those city authorities.
Makes it more probable.
Yeah, I'm gonna light my candle.
But it's not just the teachers, it's the size of the class.
It's all, it's what that means.
So teachers who are left have more.
Everybody in the building.
Yeah, it's dominoes.
Right, and so if we can not, if we have a version of the budget, like the ten point three-one percent, that's both of those changes. But if we get a different version, now I am adding to your workload, when we get a version of it that has the two hundred thousand back. Back, keeping it in the, um, school choice funds and dental fund. That might help us be prepared to actually accommodate what happens with negotiations. Or do you quit that?
I think Megan and I are saying, we're not sold that we're comfortable clocking up an extra two hundred thousand of the school choice. We're really nervous, given everything else going on. So that's why I wouldn't wanna vote tonight either. But I understand, there's nothing more Nick can do. It's on us to start talking to city authorities.
I, I think it's gonna be a difficult sell to not kick in more. There, there has been a historical, you know, just, just people looking at the school choice account balance. Over time. I look at it at the end of FY twenty-one, there was two point one four nine million dollars in that account.
They worked so hard to build it.
Well, and, and a lot of that was because in FY twenty-one.
We had crappy buildings for something breaking down all the time.
Didn't have costs.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, you went in FY twenty-two with quite a bit. You got a good chunk of revenue there. Six hundred seventy-five grand was budgeted to go against it. We ended up spending about one point three million. I, I walked into a six hundred ninety-three thousand dollar deficit when I sat in that chair on July first.
That's what happens when we let those reserves get too low, and I think that's what we're talking about.
Well, we were still okay last year. I mean, I went in the last year with over one point five. The revenue was pretty good. We spent less than we thought we would, um, last year, which, which ended up being good. So, you know, I ended the year with one point four seven three, which I'm like, okay, that's still pretty, pretty darn good. Um, you know, this year, you start with that, but then the revenues came in less than expected. Because we don't have as many kids choicing in as we did last year. The projected expenses are nine hundred twenty-two thousand, but they're gonna be above that to close the gap at the end of the year. So, you know, over time, that trickles down, and I mean, really, that's what that money should do. I mean, a two point one million balance and that is high. Uh, I, I, you know, would totally agree with that. I mean, it should be used to offset costs and to deal with emergencies.
And that's also, like, it's not, we can't guarantee, so if we start doing things like we were of a mind and we're gonna agree to do some teacher layoffs. It starts this spiral of, as a parent mentioned tonight, your choice out numbers start to increase. Your choice in numbers start to, so your costs are higher, that choice in revenue is lower. And it, this is what, um, we're just not going there. It's, you know, self emulation is on the table. I don't know, we'll figure this one out, but like, this is not, it's just, we're not, can't responsibly entertain layoffs.
So can I ask a clarifying question about the two hundred thousand of school choice funds? So in your, I mean, clearly, I think I know the answer to this, because it wouldn't have been in this ten point four percent budget. If it wasn't, but so that isn't, that keeps us at a maintainable level in our school choice. Like, we are not. For next year, we're not, we're not going into an unsustainable route. We're not shooting ourselves in the foot. We're not, okay. Okay, so then it makes sense to keep it in there.
Year after is when you're gonna be looking at, you know, you're gonna start to sweat.
Which means that for this, for the FY twenty-five budget, we can do this, but it means when we develop the FY twenty-six budget, we can't do this yet.
And, 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 you know, the, the purpose of trying to decrease the amount of school choice money used to offset the general fund. Of, you know, ask every year, what was to ease the burden on the city.
Right.
Uh, over time, you know what I mean? Rather than just like having hit a wall one year. It's like, okay, we spend a little less this year, a little less that. So that way, it's like increase the general fund slowly, so it's not a big hit. But unfortunately, this year, I mean, there's just too many balls in the air with the COVID money ending. It's just, this is not the year to.
I can make that point for the public, Megan, about how we're not anticipating asking for eleven something percent year over, year over year. This is a confluence of like explosions and inflation, explosions and other costs. Falling on, like, losing all of, you know.
Our school choice, I don't wanna call it cliff because it's not really what it is, but like, for the last several years, we have spent more than we've taken in.
Right.
And that formula only works for so long. So in FY twenty-seven or twenty-eight, it was coming anyway. Like, you, you know, at that point, you, we just can only budget somewhat less than what we think we're gonna take in. Because you still need a little bit of an emergency, you know what I mean? Like, using a million out of that every year was not gonna be a forever thing. Because we don't take in that much. You know, we were trying to. I mean, if I look at FY twenty-one, ninety-five thousand, that's all that was spent, because again, there was no cost. We were remote for most of the year. FY twenty-two, one point three six eight was spent. FY twenty-three, got it done, eight seventy-four, five ninety-one. Good, you know, this year I think it's gonna be about one point two.
Yeah.
Which ultimately is what we're trying to budget for next year. Um, but then subsequent years, it's gotta be less.
So something has to change in, in our structure.
Yes.
Because we can't keep borrowing money that we.
We, yeah, we can.
It's not safe to borrow, also it's not available to borrow.
Not there, it's, it's.
So a big structural shift has to happen.
Yeah, and I mean, and, and honestly, the reason why.
And it's really beautifully shown in that chart that he showed up.
The reason why, honestly, is because we added so many buses from Mountain View open.
Yeah.
Like, we doubled the bus fleet because a lot of students, you know, couldn't walk anywhere. And the three elementarys were situated. The population density was. You know, but now it's different where Mountain View is like way more students qualify for buses, so five needed to be added. So, you know, to help the city absorb that cost over time, that's why the use of school. So, you know, to help the city absorb that cost over time, that's why the use of school choice increased. Um, but.
Cause gas shut up at that same time, too.
It's it, every, there's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense that as a town, we decided, we voted, we selected to build these new schools for our kids, so we should be able to fund them properly in order to sustain them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're gonna work on that transportation piece once we get through this budget, we're gonna find a better way in the next couple of years.
If you want lower numbers, I don't know how you're gonna get them.
Well, that's taking.
We're gonna, yeah.
Any other questions from the committee? There's so many good, thank you for answering all of our questions. Sometimes we ask them to you like you are the, you made the money, but clearly, people appreciate how you were telling us where the money's come from. Okay, do you have anything else that you want to? Am I still sharing this?
Okay.
I don't got anything else, I'm good.
Superintendent Panetta, do you have anything you wanna?
No, no, just I think it's great that, uh, people from the union, teachers union, um, came today because we really thought it was very important and on negotiations, and they see the situation that we're in.
Yeah.
And it's very transparent here.
We're gonna need to work together.
Yes.
And, um. Yes, work together.
And any person.
Hey, yeah, motion to adjourn, uh, is there any other business? I don't know anything unrelated to the budget, but they would like to assess us. Uh, our next meeting date, we had a hold on March twelfth, we are changing it from a hold to a full-on meeting at four thirty, I will send that information.
Do you know what term we're in?
I believe that we are, and I'll confirm after the meeting.
Okay.
Because I can't do two things at once, I pretended like I was going to, I'm not. No, but I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure we're in the first floor conference room, yeah, at four thirty.
I think you're right.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and we will roll call out, just in case, Laura Scott.
Good night.
Okay.
Good night.
Megan Harvey, good night, all right, thank you, everyone.